Ladies and gentlemen, the hour is 7:12, time is 7:12 PM, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order this special budget-centered meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for this time and date. I would ask the city clerk to note for the record that all city councilors, minus Ms. Councilor Hamel, are present, and therefore, a quorum has been established for this meeting. Purpose of this meeting tonight is to hear budget presentations from Department of Public Works, Departments of Finance, Welfare, and Administration. So we'll start with Public Works. I see Mr. Anderson in the audience, would ask him to come forward.
Okay, let's see what he's going. It is on. see easily on the TV.
Wes, can you pull the microphone?
Please adjust the microphone.
Thanks. We'll cover the general fund first, then we'll go through the capitals.
This didn't work.
Still got it?
Okay.
Get right into it.
All right. How's that?
Perfect, thank you.
General fund first, then we'll do the capital, then we'll go through the various other funds, and end it up with some other actions in the projects at the end. From the general fund, we'll start off with solid waste, since that seems to be attracting a lot of interest today in regards to recycling. In fiscal year 2019, we did three changes for this year. Glasses trash, corrugated cardboard is a separate system with the compactor being at our facility on Messer Street, and then we eliminated the unattended remote recycling. We still have the transfer station as another remote recycling place, but it's only open during the hours that the transfer stations open. You can see from the budget standpoint, between 19 and 20, we're asking for an increase of about $14,000, and we also got some systemic changes that we have upcoming in the next fiscal year. Again, one is recycling is still a commodity, we don't see that changing, and Guilford is opening its own transfer station, which will have some impacts on the city of Laconia. Okay, so from the standpoint of what we're experiencing to date for solid waste, and this is to date going through the end of April, if you look at for 2018 and fiscal year 2019, you can see the difference. We're someplace around 8,700 to 9,000 tons in trash, and you can see the orange brownish color, that's recycling. So last year, we did about 1,381 tons at the end of April. This year, we're seeing 736. So by removing the unattended remote recycling, we've eliminated about half of our recycling that's coming through our system, and we've seen a slight increase in trash, but that could be associated with other, with just normal variances in the system.
So is the suggestion there that it was out-of-town people that were using the...
Could be, or it's, whatever it is, it's not entering our trash system. So it could be more people in Long Bay or South Island aren't just not bringing it to us, they've got their own contractor doing it. It's unable to determine at this point. The other side of the house on it, you can see what's been happening with the recycling processing fee. Up till October 17, it was a flat rate. They were making enough off of our recycling that all we were charged for was collection. Now, in addition to collection, we're paying a processing fee that's based on the value of the commodity at the time. After taking what they earned from the sale of the commodity, you can see through this chart what the trend has been. We started off around the $60 range, spiked up to about $123, and then we've been for the most part of this year, someplace between around $93 and $98 a month for processing fee.
Wes, that's a total of 93, or is that...
We were paying $93, our processing fee is how much we're paying per ton.
Per ton, okay.
Per ton.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
So that's, so we're spending on the order of, oh, I'd have to do the figure standpoint of it, but we're paying about, right now, about $97 a ton per ton of recycling that we're sending through the Casella system.
Which is how much annually?
The total budget for that is approximately, for the upcoming year, is going to be almost $270,000 for recycling. That's collection, and that's the processing fee.
Can you just, aside from the pickup component, what is this, the, is the $97 per ton the...
The processing fee consists of two pieces, only two pieces. We'll go in more detail in regards to savings and such later, but it basically takes it from the point where it's dropped at Belmont, at their transfer station, and the trucks they use to collect our recycling, goes down to Charleston, Massachusetts, where it goes through their basically sorting facility, and there is where they sell it to wherever it's going, whether it's overseas or someplace in the States. So that total cost is $106 per contract, and then it's lessened by whatever they get from the sales of the product.
There's two components, though, from what I heard you say, this, what you just described, plus the, what we pay to them to go around every other week to pick it up.
I think I'm...
Is that folded into the 97?
No, it isn't. You'll see that as we come through in the later slides. This is just really setting up for the, for basically your, answering your question.
So it's costing us $270,000 and the additional time to, I mean, the additional collection expense?
That includes the collection expense. So the collection expense...
So 93 to 98 includes the collection?
No, 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 no. The question, on an annual cost, the $275,000 includes the cost of collecting and the cost of processing.
And what, split them in two for us.
You'll...
What's the right, can you just give us the answer?
The particular question is, it costs us around $14,000 a month to collect recycling curbside. And on top of that, it, we're, let's see, we're doing, go backwards, 736 to, that's at 10th month point, so we're doing about 70 tons, so multiply 70 by 98, and that's what you're costing for a processing fee.
98 tons.
Right. $98 per ton, approximately 70 tons.
70 tons.
So of the 278,000, if you do that, we're going to recycle 840 tons this year at $97 a cost, that's about $82,000. So it's about $200,000 for the cost of the trucks to go around, and it's another roughly $80,000 to dispose of it once the trucks have picked it up.
Right.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to get at.
Okay, let's see, we already talked that one. Okay, so in recycling, there's three cost centers. When I did the analysis, we looked at from the standpoint of the transfer station, recycling operation stays open. Their cost is not included in all of this, because the tonnage right now is very low that goes through the transfer station. Additionally, that's based off of what we're paying contractual price, which is around $62 for the hauling and the processing and disposing of it. Waste Management has already notified us that they want to change the contract to go similar to what Casella's doing, and having a formula that takes into account the commodity price. So we may not see any savings if we decide to, you know, send everything to the Waste Management transfer station. More to follow on that as we start working through the contract changes that Waste Management wants to do and what we want to do. But the three processing centers, three cost centers are processing, curbside collection, and the cardboard compactor operation. From the processing standpoint, we're paying, and I assume $95 a ton is what our average is for recycling, versus what, and I'll catch up with you, versus what we're paying for Wheeler Brader and transporting to Wheeler Brader, where it's burned for energy by Waste Management for us. That's about $85 to $86 per ton. So all we're saving right now is about $9 per ton if we send it to Wheeler Brader to be burned versus going to recycling. You add, you know, multiply that by the number of tons we probably do in a year, by eliminating recycling, you'd only save from the processing fee about $9,000. That's it for this, for a year. Most of your cost savings, if you do it, would be in the elimination of the collection costs. The problem with that is, and you'll see as we go down, is we're starting to bump against the ability of the manual crew that we have to collect everything with one truck. So in doing the analysis, I looked at it from the standpoint of how much of that tonnage that's at curbside will be moved by the residents up to the transfer station. I said that was 10%. So 90% of the curbside recycling is going to go from being recycled to going into trash. If you look at it from that standpoint, then I did the analysis for what's the impact on our collection. Right now, their, Casella's planning factor is 10 trucks, 10 tons per truck per day per manual crew, which is what we basically have. The guys either have to lift the can to dump it into the back of the trash truck, or it's semi-automated, where it's got one of the totter type where they can put it on the arm, and they have to manually swap it from the back to get it to dump. That's, that's what a manual crew is. So right now, we're averaging about 72 tons per week over course of a year, which is 14.4 tons per day. So we're already pushing the limit. If you take out the 30 tons that we pick up on average every two weeks, that's 15 tons per week, so that's an additional 3 tons per day on an average, so we're pushing close to almost 18 tons per day, which means a one-truck crew can't pick it up anymore. So there will be unlikely any collection savings, and I'll explain that in the next slide. What's going to happen is, if you can see, we have a two-week cycle. The first week, basically, we have one trash truck and down picking up trash. The second week, we have two trucks in town, one picking up trash, the other picking up recycling. What happens with that recycling crew, it now, once it's not done with us, the next week, it goes to some other town or towns to pick up recycling. If we convert everything over to trash, they're going to have to hire another crew to make up for that week one, which means if they can't find another town to put them in, we're picking up for the full cost of that crew.
Can I, can I ask a question here?
Yes.
Has somebody suggested we eliminate recycling in the city of Laconia, or is this an academic exercise?
I have been, I've been asked on numerous occasions by the council to look at what the numbers would be if we eliminated recycling. So I'm trying to get this out of the way.
As other communities have looked at.
Correct. So from our standpoint, we're going to, depending upon what luck they have with getting that crew to work for someone else, we could be picking up the total cost of a second crew, which basically puts us in the same cost range that we're paying right now for recycling. Okay.
But if somebody from other town does pick up, I'm sorry, if another town picks up that crew, then there would be a savings.
There would be a savings, maybe. I mean, that's, again, we, we could go nine months in a year and be paying for a crew for a full two-week period. Okay, looking at it from a, just a standpoint of the system, I'm recommending that we don't eliminate recycling. We don't eliminate curbside recycling. One is the market's still adjusting, they're trying to figure, or the market itself is trying to determine what they want to do with it, what the cost is going to be. You've got other firms coming online that's purchasing it, and China has recently bought three of the old paper mills that handled recycling products. They're not quite sure if they're going to fire them up here, if they're going to ship them all over to China for recycling, but there's things that are going on that way. There's minimal processing cost savings if we send the trash, or send the recycling to the incinerator. $9,000 is approximately 3% of our annual costs in a year. So that's a lot of goodwill that we're buying for $9,000 with the public who still expects us to recycle. That has not changed from that standpoint. Most of the people that they have surveyed over in the States are indicating that they still want recycling to occur. The other piece to it is, again, will we or will we not have any cost savings associated with collection costs? The long-range piece to it is, is right now, by contract, the incinerator down in the Bo Concord area, we only have a contract for them through 2022. The question is, is whether that incinerator after that date will be cost-effective to operate. A lot of that depends upon how much money they get for the cost of electricity that they sell. The other piece is how much more repairs and everything else that they have to put into that incinerator. The other piece to it is, is there is limited, there is competition for the limited landfill that's spaces out there. Massachusetts in the next year or so is going to have two of its incinerators close, which means they're going to be looking for places to send that trash. So we'll be in competition, if our incinerator closes also, with everyone else in regards to where are we sending our landfill. We still need to do some things. We do need to improve our quality of our, our recycling product. We still have a lot of contaminant in it, but what we do is not necessarily a direct impact. If the other communities that are serviced by Casella also do it, then we'll start seeing direct impact, because what happens is all the recycling from this area that Casella picks up goes and gets dumped on a floor. It's all mixed together, goes in the back into the semi-truck, and it gets hauled to Charleston where the same thing happens again for sorting. So a lot of different municipalities, a lot of private businesses are going to have to improve their quality for the cost to come down. The other piece is, we really need to encourage our residents and our businesses to bring their corrugated cardboard to the compactor. That gets it out of the cost of $93 a ton, and corrugated cardboard is heavy, and puts it into a system where we're, we can sell it directly to a salvager and try to break even just on the cost of hauling. So that's, that's the piece that we're trying to do through the corrugated cardboard, and that's the compactor that we have located at the PW Maintenance Garage on Messer Street. It's in the same location as the old remote recycling was. So that's, that's staff recommendation, that we really don't want to at this time eliminate curbside recycling, because I don't think it's going to generate any significant cost On the other side of the house, what we see coming up on the solid waste side is Guilford's transfer station probably is going to open up in September. Some side effects of their plans for the, their transfer station is they cannot take compacted truckloads. In other words, trash that's picked up by Casella Waste Management or Pernard in their large compactor trucks are still going to have to come to us or another source, because they're not going to be able to dump at the Guilford transfer station. For construction and demolition debris, the largest-sized truck they're going to be able to handle is about a one-ton. So any large dump trucks that are being used to haul off construction demolition debris are still going to have to come to us or go to another location to be dumped. At that time, or sometime shortly thereafter, we will end our transfer station supporting Guilford residents. That has some side effects to us, in that we generate income off of how many residents from Guilford come to our transfer station to dump. It's about $5 per vehicle that comes across into our transfer station. What that means is, we'll see a difference in how much earnings we retain or collect from Guilford by the reduction, the number of trucks. So we'll still be having, the compacted loads comes to us, which will give us about $4,000 to $5,000 a year, depending upon how many trucks come across, and income versus the $50,000 that we tend to get from Guilford by all the vehicles coming through. The other change that we're looking at doing is, on the January 1st, we're going to change our process that we have in effect with the town of Guilford. Right now, we are collecting that $5 fee. It's not going to mean much for the, for the large trucks that come through. So we are talking about ending that piece to them and charging them the cost of what we charge for a city of Laconia trash coming in with compacted haulers, keeping that fee, and then sending the trucks to Wheeler Brader, and then we pay what it costs us to dispose of it. So we would be earning just a little bit more, probably someplace in the order of about $8 to $9 a ton by disposing it that way versus $5 a truckload. But that's still enough to overcome what we're going to be losing by Guilford separating from us. So we're still going to have to come up with about $25,000, even implementing that, to be able to break even. The other side of the house is, we will not see much income come in to us from residential construction demolition debris, because they won't be coming to us anymore. That piece, we haven't calculated yet.
So if I'm just going to jump in here a second, we are going to bring you an amended number, and we're working out the tonnage right now based on Guilford's tonnage that will be coming to Laconia. Right now, it's a little bit of a complicated system. We collect the money, Guilford had been subsidizing, we keep $5 a ton, there's money trading hands. If it's just going to be those large compacted loads and Guilford's on board, we're going to charge the full tonnage, and we'll be paying for the tonnage to be transported, transported going forward. No more swapping money to even out the bookkeeping with Guilford. We already build these haulers anyway, because they're doing business in Laconia as we speak right now, so it's nothing new in our system. It's just going to save a lot of paperwork and swapping money back and forth. So we're working out that number, but basically, we're going to come to you and say, please increase our revenue by X, because we're going to keep all the money now that we collect from the Guilford haulers, and please add that same number into our expense side, because now we're going to be paying to dispose of it. So it's basically going to be a wash on the revenue and expense side, but it's going to neaten up our operations on the whole billing process with Guilford, because again, other than the compacted load...
What is the timing of what you're...
This will be for January 1, so we'll be figuring that number now to amend the budget before we adopt it, and it'll be...
Not the bottom line of the budget, just the department budget?
Nope. The two numbers, of the solid waste, it's going to be add X in in revenue, add Y in in expense, and they're going to zero each other out. But we're going to incur a little more revenue and a little more expense for that reason. So it's really a housekeeping matter, but we're going to work on that number, and it should be a straight offset.
Okay. And then we're, if we're going to keep this process going, we're going to have to look at what we charge for scale fees, if the object is to make up the difference for the loss in revenue and keep the revenue same for the solid waste coming in, so we don't have to take money from other departments or other accounts to make up for the loss.
Loss, you're estimating it $25,000?
$25,000.
That's not in the budget now.
Correct.
So we're looking at that, we look back, I can recall when I first started here, I know Councilor Lippman, looking around the table, and Councilor Hamel would have been here, and I kind of put things in perspective when I got here. We were only charging $30 a ton for a tipping fee for all of the private haulers coming in, yet it was costing us mid $80 a ton to dispose of it. So we were subsidizing...
You can see, that wasn't a good idea.
That wasn't a good idea. So with the council's support, we, we did a two-step increase, and we went to $60 a ton one year, and then went to $90 a ton the second year, so there wasn't that sticker shock. And we've been at that $90 a ton probably since 2013.
13, correct.
So there have been no rate increases there. So if we were to look at a small increase going forward on the commercial haulers, it will have been the first one since 2013. And part of that was the new contract with the Concord Co-op, part of that was Waste Management renegotiating some of their hauling fees in the process of renewing that contract. So we've, collectively, we've done a very good job of managing solid waste and keeping that tonnage still at below $90 a ton, but we're probably going to be looking at a small recommended increase to the council, but it'll be the first one in over six years.
So are there any other questions on the solid waste side? I want to swap over to the general fund now in regards to my, my normal Public Works operation budget. You can see at the slide in front of you, the red is what I'm tracking for this slide is last year's, blacks this, is the proposed year, and the changes you see in blue. So what we're increasing, or being increased by 22,000 roughly, between fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020. We are having some savings in the salary standpoint, as you can see from the slide, that's because of the transition. I've had some people retire, I've some people take other jobs, the new people come in at a lesser rate, so I've had some savings there. You can see winter maintenance has gone up by 20,000, and we've programmed additional $3,000 for streetlights, just for what we're seeing in regards to the cost of electricity and other costs associated with it. Additionally, we have two new programs that are coming in. First is the funding for the accepting, the unaccepted road in Aziz Condition. It's programmed for $15,000 for the year. That's just the very beginning to get the process going. That's going to be a multi-year program to complete. And then this will be the first year where we've got money allocated to support contract hauling of snow.
And that was based on the council request to be able to have some funds available for downtown as needed, so that's what that 20,000 increase was targeted for.
What we see in the future in regards to our operations, and you can see it just about in every business stateside, is the problem with finding replacements for people who transition, either through retiring or whatever. The jobs that we've had posted recently, we're seeing very few applicants, and if they do apply, for the most part, they don't necessarily have all the skills that we need to do it, so there's a long training period to get in. Additionally, we have a challenge coming forward, and next calendar year, the rules for CDL are changing. We're basically not going to be able to train anybody who doesn't have a CDL license and be able to get them a CDL license after the testing. The new CDL requirement basically says they have to go through a registered school to get qualified before they can take the CDL test.
And that's nationwide, Wes?
That's nationwide, and there is no exception for municipal organizations or governmental organizations. From operational changes, this past, or this current fiscal year, I should say, is our first year that we've been on LED streetlight programs without having large numbers of rebates back to us for the conversion. So this will be the first full year where we get a good feeling of what it's costing us for our streetlight program. It'll give us a track of where we are against what I think our estimate is. And my estimate, based off of what the tariff had, was should put us in the range of about 125,000 just for those streetlights that are on the tariff. We have some streetlights, such as downtown Lakeside Avenue, the walking path behind McDonald's on Union Ave, are all in meters, so they're not in that part of the calculations. We pay based off of what the meters have for electricity. We are still pursuing and have expanded to agree equipment sharing program with Belmont. We get the use of their grader to maintain our dirt roads. We loan them, when they need it, the Vector to assist in any sanitary sewer problems that they have, as well as we loan them the hot box. We're doing the same to a degree with Guilford, but it's mainly a service standpoint. They take all of our yard waste at no cost to us, and we loan them the hot box when they need it to do any repairs. So that's going well, and we're still looking to see what we can do in regards to controlling winter maintenance costs, because that's actually the largest sub-account that I have in my operational budget. Continued changes, you're not going to see anything in regards to the next four signs, parking, traffic control, tree removal, and in-house drainage. We're trying to maintain increased funding levels for those, just because that is a lot of the work that we're doing right now. A lot of our signs are barely able to read, so we're spending more money than typically, so we can bring them up to what the standard should be and make them readable for the motoring public. Tree removal, self-explanatory, and if you've been going around, you've been seeing a lot of sinkholes that we've had, a lot of that's just old drainage systems that we're having to catch up with. In 2019, we had some new programs. One is the landfill groundwater monitoring program. Basically, we just separated it out from the engineer, so we could track it separately. We haven't quite gotten up to the full cost, because we're still in the final process of finalizing the paperwork. of finalizing the paperwork with Department Environmental Services on the Frank Bean burn dump. Once that's done, we'll see a cost change as we have more and more requirements for that. We have done our mandatory PFAS testing at our two landfills, disposal gardens and Frank Bean. So far, the results have come back such that we don't have, we, we do meet the current PFAS criteria. So we don't anticipate being impacted on that, uh, standpoint. And the other site that's out there, uh, the old firefighter training site that's over, over by the airport is actually a state operated site, so they're responsible for that site, not the city of Laconia. Uh, parking kiosks, operational costs, we picked up last year. Uh, we've been able to manage the costs easily or quite easily on that because what we do now, once, uh, the, the, uh, season is over with, the last day for, uh, charging residents is a Columbus State, we turn off the kiosks with the firm that's our vendor. We turn them back on on about May fifteenth. So we're really only got about six months of operational costs versus twelve months of operational costs. So that saves us quite a bit of money.
What's been the experience on reliability?
Uh, we've, last year we had some, some large startup, startup issues because of our first year really starting it from ground zero after winter time. Uh, we worked through them. Uh, must've took about two to three weeks to get them all figured out because some are software problems. So far this year, we only had one software glitch and we haven't had any hardware glitches yet that we know of. Uh, let's see. Other operational changes that are coming up, again, accepting roads as is, I anticipate that we'll start with the Methodist campground area mainly because it's sort of the simplest from the layout standpoint. They're fairly short roads, they're fairly straight. We get to test out the system using these roads. Additionally, it's a good test of working with the residents because all the houses are close to the road, so we'll get to learn the ins and outs of how to actually accomplish that. The other piece to it is, is we're going to develop standard, uh, operating procedures for snow hauling and basically have a criteria in place when we go from, uh, saying it's not at that point to haul to that point at haul, and we'll bring it up to city council for approval. Okay, road improvements, construction season per year. You can see what we have up there. The top number is the total mileage per year. The different colors represent the different types of services. Uh, for the most part, you can see we did the large increases on it, all associated with the crack sealing program we're trying to do. Uh, it was only eight point nine miles last year because we started some of the projects, i.e. Court Street, Union Ave, Elm to Stark, but we hadn't completed them. So you'll see this number go up higher this year as we finish those projects and actually have them in the count. We've already done our crack sealing for the, for this fiscal year, and we'll be scheduling again for next fiscal year unless we see something that may be necessary by the end of the, the summer before we go into winter. Questions on that?
And Wes, I know we got rained out on the long line striping tonight. Can you give an update as to what that plan is?
They're supposed to be coming in tonight, uh, to do the double yellow and then come in tomorrow to do the white line. Again, it all depends upon rain. Uh, we've had a couple, the first two times, one was a rain, one's a maintenance failure, so, uh, the, the one for last night was rain again, and we're hoping that the weather stays clear. Besides impacting the painting operation, just about impacts everything else, the rain that we've been having for the last about month and a half.
Uh, Wes, do we, is there a, a, I don't want to say plan, but plan for the white striping like parking spaces and crosswalks or whatever? And the reason I ask that is, I see the downtown is pretty well done, but I noticed the school crossings up on, on North Main Street aren't done, and I thought school crossings probably ought to come first.
The, I have about a two-man crew who does it, and it just, we start in April soon as the weather breaks, and we use an oil base so we can get in there earlier. And it takes us a good three or four months to get caught up with everything. So they're working school crossings, it just happens not to be on North Main Street at the time, although they have done the one up by, uh, Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I just, every day there's two guys out there doing it.
Every day there's two guys out there. The only time they weren't out there is they're one of the ones who are controlling the, uh, long line painting tonight. So they'll be napping tomorrow during the day, or it won't be as efficient, shall we say.
Fair enough.
Yep. Okay. Uh, some operational changes that we've done, uh, probably the biggest that we implemented over the last construction season, but really getting into this construction season, is we now have a contract for geotechnical testing services. What that basically means is we're testing the compaction on all the trench repairs sufficient to provide us comfort that they are meeting compaction standards, and we're doing it on the road base. Uh, they don't schedule it, we schedule it based off of what their, their workers' plan is for the week, and we bring them up as necessary. We also test with that firm asphalt surface thickness, and we test compaction of the asphalt itself. So we're getting a pretty good readout in regards to is the contractors meeting the standards for, uh, road construction, and that includes we do checks on ourselves and do checks on, uh, waterworks if we're doing sufficient, uh, work like Mesa Street with the waterworks there.
How we doing?
Pardon?
How are we doing?
We're doing good so far. Uh, we haven't had to go back, uh, and pull anything up. A couple of times we've had to go back and put some more rolls on it to get the compaction up. It's always the, the first piece of the season is always the, the challenge to get everybody back into cycle as to how to do it and get the patterns going, but we're doing well.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. The other piece to it is for project inspection. We have a full-time project inspector on Union Avenue, Elm to Stark, and we have one on Court Street from doing phase one. Uh, that helps, uh, depends upon the experienced level of the, the resident engineer. We may have to sometimes coach him or give him some assistance to understand what's happening. But, uh, we've got a very good one, very experienced on Court Street, and it's showing, and we're working with the one on Union, uh, to get him up to speed. Uh, let's see. Payment management?
Are contract employees or?
No, these are consultant firms that we hire to do the resident engineers, and they're facing the same challenges that we are. It's hard to get employees at this point, uh, so they're doing training for all the new employees they get, and we're part of that training package for them at the same time. Uh, let's see. Payment management program? We're in the second year of, from our last update. Uh, we're still using it to determine what we need to do. We will do not this next fiscal year, but the next, at the end of the next calendar year is will be our first new cycle. Whereas the last time we did it, we did it all, at all the city at once. We're not looking to do that anymore. What we're going to do is say one quarter or one-third of the city on a three-year basis or a four-year basis, depending upon how we decide to tackle it. And he changes that we do in-house, and by that I mean through the construction program. We are already putting into the pavement management, uh, database. So we're keeping track of what's going on and what we need to do. Uh, let's see. And drainage, just a reminder, the water is the enemy of pavement, and the reason why I say that, the water table's still high. We still have water coming out of the ground in places that we haven't seen it in years. Uh, we're trying to figure out right now what the problem is on the double apartment complex on Union Ave as you're coming up from Main Street. There's a constant water running right through the asphalt coming down Union. So we're trying to get that piece figured out and solved before we do any more work on that section of Union Avenue.
Where is this?
Uh, it's a, you, the driveway goes into a sort of a tan beige apartment complex. It's one on each side. I can't remember the number.
The Land Trust?
Thank you.
The Land Trust development there?
Uh, I don't think that one is.
At the top of the hill?
No, it's not the top of the hill, it's before the crest.
It's on the other side of the street, right?
Yeah.
Of the Land Trust and down closer to the intersection.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, it, we had problems with it last year. We had problems with it all over the winter, and it's still, we have water coming out of that, uh, driveway constantly now. Uh, let's see. All right. Swapping from the general fund to the special funds, uh, internal service fund is the first. Uh, it's basically an internal fund where the costs for that organization are funded by fees that we charge other departments in the city. Uh, real, the most biggest impacts to it is what's the cost of fuel? What's the age of the fleet? Because the age of fleet determines how many repair parts that we need to put on it. The older the fleet, the more cost it is. But we're also looking at being smart, just like we did last year, what, how do we want to use purchasing warranties? With all the large diesels or all the large complicated vehicles with emission systems, we are making sure that we have an extended warranty on them to get us through the growing pains on those emission systems. On the short-term plan, we've already implemented purchasing the diagnostic software for the key critical systems in our fleet, basically international Cummins engines, Allison's transmissions, and the brakes that you see in all the large trucks, whether it's my fleet, parks, or fire department. The piece that we're really working on now is developing sources to train our mechanics on all the new technology that keeps coming out all the time on these trucks. Uh, for the most part, they, for the past few years, they've all been keeping up with their education from being a public works employee working on the street. We're gradually changing that to, for the mechanics being a public works employee working on the vehicles and focusing on what we need in regards to those vehicles. The other aspect of that piece to it is, and that's what I forgot to mention, is all those diagnostic software is subscription-based. So basically every year we have to pay to keep the subscriptions going, just like you do for a lot of the software now. Uh, we are working with, uh, the finance director, Glenn Smith, to change some of our internals service fund procedures. Some of the initial pieces that we're really looking at is inventory management, not so much from the standpoint of losing track of it, but from the standpoint of accounting for it. So we don't account for it. Once a year, we account for it all through the year. It gives us better ability to predict what we're spending. Uh, because if you pull it out of inventory, it goes onto a vehicle, you don't necessarily see it, you see it when you purchase it to go in, so you got to be able to keep track of where the flow of money is going. Uh, we're going to look at what we need to do to change the depreciation or what rent we charge for the equipment. Because what we basically have to do is get a vehicle scheduled for collecting that money, not based off of what it cost us when we bought it, but what it's going to cost us to replace it in the future. So we have enough money in the account when we go to buy the new vehicle that we can pay for it, whether it be on the bond type piece or whether it be through, uh, you know, paying cash for it. And that all depends upon what's the cost of the vehicle. Okay, sanitary sewer fund. Uh, we had the rate increase that was approved past year for twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. We will have a modified rate study in the tail end of the twenty twenty-one timeframe, not necessarily to look at a change in rate, but to look at, to make sure the rates that we did change are having the effect or the expected earnings that we expect, you know, we were, we believed we were going to get. Uh, we did put out a survey to all the residents in the Woodvale Drive area who were, would be impacted by that sanitary sewer service that we worked through the council with. We didn't get much, uh, people responding yes that they'd like to see it, uh, so we're not pursuing any further. If they decide to pursue it at some point, we basically have a design in the shelf, we'll just have to update the cost to whatever fiscal year it happens to be in, and then we can actually start the process.
So that project is dead as of now?
That, that piece of it is. We still have a design for a portion of Endicott Street East and, uh, the plantation colonial area if they decide to do it at some point.
So we had said that we wanted seventy-five, seventy-five percent?
Two-thirds.
I'm sorry?
We wanted two-thirds of the people.
And what did we get?
Uh, let me see. I think that was closer to about twenty percent.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty percent, yes?
Ten out of thirty was it?
We had ten in favor.
I think we sent out a memo late last week on that.
We did.
Yeah.
We were twenty and ten.
Ten in favor.
It's ten in favor and a lot of, and a lot of no responses.
Twenty were opposed and ten didn't respond. Which, which actually is a pretty good response. Okay, yes. Uh, that's right. So we are, uh, at the, changing hats for a second, still the same subject. I'm the acting chairman for the advisory board for the Winnebago River Basin Program. We are still pursuing, as fast as we can push it, a rate allocation formula. By that I mean we want to have a flow-based system. We have got meters in for all the communities except for four that can, are reliable. The four that we don't have is because of low flow problems. What that basically means is we can't get a meter accurate enough to determine what their flow is. So we have worked with a consultant right now to determine, is there a way we can meter it, you know, by doing it a different way? Or do we need to look at some other way of determining their flow, i.e. based off of how much water they consume, how much houses? We're pushing to have that done sometime in the summer. That will give us what the rate formula should be, get it approved by the advisory board. Then we got to start going to all the communities to get that piece approved. Uh, let's see.
Go ahead.
Do you have any sense of what that means for how the costs will be allocated to the city? Because we were paying significantly more than other of the, the other communities, right?
We're, we bought about forty-nine percent of the capacity back when in the eighties when they, when they did it. With what we're doing, I think will be less, i.e. we're getting the inflow and the infiltration out of the, the water. So we're getting, going to get true flow of the sewage, not flow of the mix. Some of the other communities haven't been as aggressive yet in inflow and infiltration problems, so they, their numbers may go up and our numbers may go down. Uh, it's still early in the process because we got to see what their numbers are and start seeing what the formula looks like. I suspect that's going to be the, the big approval problem, process.
Because ours, ours allocation, cost allocation's going to go down and theirs is going to go up.
Could go down and theirs could go up.
They're just going to go up, so, yeah.
Uh, let's see. Uh, we still have infrastructure projects that are coming up based off of what you approved money-wise, and we are looking at basically focus on the Lakeport area sewer. Uh, we have found that our largest inflow infiltration, we believe right now, is coming from that area. Uh, it's causing problems with one of our pump stations, so we're looking to focus on that and try to alleviate the problem to a degree. To do that, we are planning to, uh, go for a one-point-five million dollar bond in this fiscal year. What that basically means is we got to amend what we're requesting for fiscal year twenty twenty to have the first bond payments in the budget. Uh, that one-point-five million will, will probably from an execution standpoint be spent over two construction seasons. It'll be probably partially twenty twenty and partially twenty twenty-one, just based off of the impact on the residents. As we get the plans developed, that'll tell us how we go about and how we game out awarding the bonds for that.
That's in the budget?
This was all included in cash in the budget.
Yes, Roger.
So by separating this out to bonding, we're probably going to make a reduction in the cash outlay and then account for a portion of it in the bond payment, which overall would be a reduction in the capital amount.
Right.
So we will, we're working on those.
So it's in cash now?
It's in cash now. We're working on this one-point-five million to bring you a reduction in there, as was the concern of the council, maybe to spread this out over a certain number of years because we just had a rate increase.
And the bonds that we're looking at typically for, I'll say, long line underground pipe is going to be in the twenty years for sanitary sewer. A little bit different from water because sanitary sewer is so corrosive. Uh, you may have problems with your manhole structures and everything, and have to go back in, you know, at the twenty-year point to start doing renovation or major repairs on it, uh, versus the water line, not as corrosive, of course, on the inside, they tend to go for a thirty or forty year. Uh, let's see. And then in the future, we're still working on one of the major, or two of the major things that we have to do. We've got to update our sanitary sewer ordinance, and because we're a co-permitee for the wastewater treatment plant system in the Winnebago River Basin Program, we have to ensure that all aspects of the system meet EPA requirements. So that means the separate private sanitary sewer systems that are out there, such as Long Bay, Southstown, are going to have to do their same reports to us that we have to provide to EPA. Okay. Motorcycle week, we all know starts soon. That's the last of my separate budgets, although this is split among many of us. We're still doing traffic counts, uh, but we are focusing on that area that's specifically around the Weir's Beach, up by Fun Spot by the bridge itself, and then, oh, up by Watson Road, so we know where they're all counting, how they're all gaining access. So that should help in regards to somehow predicting what the traffic or visitor flow So that should help in regards to somehow predicting what the traffic or visitor flow is coming into the area. We did that for the last few years, focusing on that piece, and we're going to do it again this year. We are, we did change the traffic pattern this year to begin earlier on Friday instead of Monday. We'll be watching to make sure everything goes correctly in that change. Because last year, we still had a lot of, on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, of senior citizens coming through to go on the Mount Washington with their own cars. And it was causing a few problems at that point with the setup and getting things going. So we'll watch that carefully to see how it progresses. Some operational changes, part of it that was done last year and we're going to continue this year, is we notified each of the vendors that their landlords were responsible for providing solid waste services. And we did recognize that that had a major impact on how much trash was in front around the cans. The vendors were taking it back to wherever the landlords had versus putting it beside our cans, causing problems for the, the visitors in the area. And it reduced the, you know, the amount of impact on those visitors. And then we're going to monitor vendor setup to reduce the possibility of safety hazards. We had a couple of vendors who set up too close to the travelway, and we had motorcycles within about a foot of people that were at the vendor trying to purchase goods. And then we're looking at what we can do to optimize levels of support to make sure we're not undercutting, but we're, we're not over-supplying what is a smaller event than what used to be in the past. Other actions, near-term, reverse angle parking and traffic pattern. We got the, the modified plans back from our consultant. We're talking with our, our paint line painter, Striper, who's going to assist us on it. And we're targeting to do that sometime shortly after Bike Week. What our game plan for that is, we're going to put up signs initially saying "Traffic Pattern's Changing" to start getting people watching for the change. Then we'll do the, the change on it, and then we'll leave the signs up. Traffic pattern has changed, to see it. We're working on a flyer that we can pass out to people, put up on the website, send out on Laconia links that explains how to do reverse angle parking to try to ease the transition to it. We have the plans back for-
I pointed out to the council that, per a conversation I had with city manager, that we're going, the the size, the width of the parking spaces is, has been, has been enlarged from the original to give people a little more security in terms of confidence, in terms of confidence, I guess, right?
A little more crash space, you mean?
I thought it was worth it to sacrifice one or two spaces on each street to, in order to have the spaces be a little wider.
Again, we are planning to put all the bump outs in initially as paint, so we can see how it works. We'll put cones or barrels around it to see how everything flows. And as we get comfortable with it, then we'll start converting it to concrete. I expect we'll focus on doing Beacon Street West because of the safety hazard over there. And we might wait until the next year to do Beacon Street East, just to see.
On the bump outs?
On the bump outs, yeah. Beacon Street West really has no impact if we decide to do something different with the parking because the bump out is so far away from the parking area. Not true on Beacon Street East. The bump outs are really designed based off the, how the parking is coming into it. So if you change the parking on it, you've got to change the bump out.
Have, have we thought about putting a, a video system just to watch how people are dealing with the changes there?
I, I could ask the police department. They do have some portables.
Standing over there and watching.
We, we were hoping you'd just stand out there with your, with your phone, you know?
We, we did-
I've, I've got confidence in our residents there. We're going to nail this.
We do have the plans back for the ADA improvements at the traffic signals. We're looking through the costs now to figure out what they are and how much we can get on them. The game plan is probably to just pull Busby again off the roads in the Fourth of July timeframe. And we'll have them start going on some of the smaller side-street type projects. So we're not interfering with traffic so much. Midterm, I have the first draft back on the updated cost to renovate the parking garage. I'm going through it now with the consultant. They've got some changes they have to do in regards to formatting, so it's easier to understand what's public costs, what's private costs before we come in. And I'm anticipating probably sometime in the July timeframe after the budget's put, to be able to present you that information.
Are we still looking at two floors?
We, we priced it out for full cost for two floors. We also did a rough cost estimate for one floor and didn't spend much time on it. And we also included a by-the-thumm cost estimate for a new parking garage. And what we did is how many spaces versus what it cost some other cities recently for the same number, you know, spaces, to give you an idea of what a new parking garage roughly would cost. I mean, there's no engineering on it. There's no, uh-
So we're going to have two, two stories. We're going to have two stories, a sort of a guess at one story and a dart throw at what a new garage would give.
I would put it, we'll have fixed on two stories. We'll probably have a darn-good estimate on the one-story, and it's a dart throw. Accurate dart throw, reasonable dart throw for the new parking garage.
We know Dover built one three years ago. Portsmouth is just completing one. It's, it's a mathematical formula, the number of spaces to the average, whatever, so.
For $30,000 a space?
It's not unheard of, so it's a-
At least.
So it's, it's, it's an accurate dart.
The other piece that we're looking in the midterm is Comcast. Comcast, of course, you approved them coming and be another, I guess you could say, service provider. We're working with them right now, although they're not ready for it, to get them in, to get them to do the underground work at the Court Street, Main and Union intersection where all the utilities are underground, so they don't have to dig up our new road to put their duck work in. It won't be any of the, the cables in there. They'll just be duck work, ready to go, pulled whenever they need to. So we're working closely with them. Long-term wise, we still need to get an ADA self-assessment going on. That's a regulatory requirement. Once we get past this heavy construction season, we'll have as part of our, our CIP submission, the costs associated with doing the self-assessment. Typically for a community our side, you hire a consultant because they've got to walk every single sidewalk, all the crossings, all the roads, and develop a cost analysis and plan of how to meet this ADA requirements that are imposed upon us. Okay, projects. So what we've got underneath way, we've got Court Street Phase One. We're at binder. That's where we need to be. They're doing the curbing?
Yes.
We're doing the curbing right now. Once the curb's in, we've got the set for how the sidewalks go in and how to do the striping. So the curbing's really the key piece at this point. We're still looking sometime June to be finished with the curb, the sidewalks. And we may go into July, but that'll only be for the purpose of whatever we have to do for Lomond Seating. Again, that's really weather-dependent upon that point. Court Street Phase Two, we'll start as soon as they finish the hardscape portion. They'll move onto Phase Two and begin working from Fair Street towards Main Street. Union Elm to Stark, we're back in there. We will be out of it sometime Thursday, do final button-up for everything. So we're out of that road, just like we'll be out of Court Street for the Bike Week. We won't be in there working. They'll be either other places, or they may actually be outside the city trying to catch up another project so they can hit us hot and heavy after Bike Week's over with. Let's see.
Well, that's just, that's a pause.
That's a pause. Yep. We're not stopping construction. It's just get out of the way of the Motorcycle Week.
So, all right.
So when's Mesa Street going to be done?
Okay, that's, that's, that's the, actually the DeTal Avenue Drainage Project because that's how it's listed in the CIP. We'll go to that, then I'll come back to the others. Okay. So Mesa Street, right now you've got Water Works in there. Water Works probably will be finished with their, their water line end of June. Soon as they're finished, you get through a Fourth of July timeframe, then we'll start putting in the, the rest of the underground drainage. Once the underground drainage is in for the, the street, then we'll do the road surface and finish up. So we're probably pushing August timeframe to have that totally done and out of the way. But again, reminder what's coming up, you have Liberty Utilities going to be doing their, replacing their old cast iron pipe that's on Mesa Street from basically church going up towards Oak Street. You may see them working right now.
They would be working there today.
They had a, actually had a leak in it last week. It wasn't planned to start. That was just, they had a gas leak coming out of the old pipe. So I think it's-
Church to Oak.
Oh, Church to Oak. Union Ave, Guilford Ave to Spring will be scheduled for calendar year 2020. To get to that point, what we're planning on doing is to do a shim on Union Ave from basically Main Street to about Spring Street for a shim that can last five years. This is depending upon what the council does and how much money is. You'll have to pay down some of the bonds to get the money available to make another bond to be able to afford that piece of the street. From Spring Street to about Busy Corner, we're going to do a drag shim just enough to get us through this winter before we start project next, next construction season. So you'll see a shim the whole length, but it'll be a true five-year shim, and there'll be a one-year shim from Spring to Busy Corner. Okay. On the annual side of the program, South Main Street, you may have already seen from, basically with granite-stained glasses, we put the binder down. We'll come in with overlay on it. We did that really because that road was getting to the point where we didn't want to spend a lot of money on it, and that'll give us a long extended life. Lexington, we're going to do a shim from basically Main Street, or, excuse me, Parade, up to approximately Primrose. Grant Street, that's the one that took all, the heavy hit over the wintertime. We're pricing that out now. What, in our investigation of it, we determined that most of the drainage structures are shot. They're old, bottomless, brick-type drainage structures, and they've just given up. So we know we've got to change out of drainage structures. We know we've got to change out our cross pipes. We're trying to determine now whether the existing main line is good enough that we can line it, or we've got to change it out. That piece is probably sometime after the Fourth of July. Lee Wood and Bell Hill will be reclaimed sometime after the first, after Fourth of July, when Water Works starts, because they've got to put new water main in first. Then Union Ave, Spring to Main and Mesa to Elm, you see what the shim, shims here. And Union Main, Mesa. The Union Ave shim from Mesa to Elm is basically similar to what we did on North Main Street. We don't need to do the first layer, the leveling shim. We're just putting a new about three-quarter inch overlay to protect the road from unraveling any further. It's more of a condition there with, so the weather doesn't hit what's there and it's able to stay. And then-
When was that road rebuilt, you know?
I want to say, no, probably closer to fifteen. And then Lenny Lane is on the program, but it's not funded by us. That's the, one of the projects Kevin Morissette did. He put it binder level. We're trying to get it such that by the end of this construction season, we put the surface coat on. And we're working with Mr. Morissette on that. Subject to your questions.
Questions, gentlemen? Mr. Haynes, Councilor Haynes?
Have all the poles been reset on Court Street? In reference to the sidewalks?
All of them except for two.
Okay.
The two that are in, I'll call it the Phase Two, up by Main Street. We couldn't reset them because they would have been in the road. We had to wait till we got the curb in for that piece to put them in the place so it's, the drivers wouldn't hit them.
Okay. One of them, if I may. I'm, I'm not, I don't remember exactly when, but it was during the winter we had a discussion about sidewalks and the maintenance. I mean, the, in particular with the sanding. Do we have the proper equipment so that we can kind of upgrade? Because I know last winter was kind of a tough year.
The, the challenge that we have is, I really have two tow-behind Sanders. There are some that are out there that we've started to investigate. But that's for sanding. That's the, that's the critical problem, is the number of Sanders I have that are tow-behind on it.
So is your answer yes or no?
No, we're going to have, we're going to have to do something to increase the number of Sanders. But the, the problem is, is they don't make the trailer type anymore.
Oh, that's-
Except for one particular company. And we've got to backtrack and see what their experience with them is. Most of the ones they have now are fixed to the back, which are smaller capacity. And the problem comes is when you make a turn, and now you're longer and you wipe out things. Whereas with the, the trailer, it pivots. The one that's on the back is fixed. So you're, you're, you're about two feet longer when you got one on the, the back.
Sidewalks?
Yeah.
We have two sidewalk Sanders.
We, we have two si, two towed sidewalk Sanders that get attached to our-
After a storm, how many, how many, uh, how many units? I know you've got two different kinds, right, are, are out?
We have, we break it down into two pieces. One is we have the plows that go out. They're not towing Sanders at that point because they're, the object of that is to open up the sidewalks. Once all the sidewalks are open-
How many of those are there?
Five.
So you've got five guys out clearing sidewalks simultaneously?
Correct. And then, once that's done, then two guys are out with Sanders on the back, trying to sand everything. So we've got to be able to get Sanders for all of them to be able to increase productivity. But there are very few.
And what's our mix of equipment on sidewalk clearing now? Do we have those old Bombadils or something like that?
They're all Bombadils. We have one wheeled one, but we, it's on its, I won't say last legs. It's case of if we put it out plowing, it's not going to make it. We use it mainly for sweeping at this point.
And the rest are Bobcats?
Re, and Bobcats. And the Bobcats don't have sander capability because the sander, well, they do, but they go on the front. And they're worthless unless it's a parking lot that's perfectly flat because you keep digging into the ground with the device.
So we just have one Bombadier left?
No, no, we, we've got five Bombadires.
Five Bombadires?
Two Bobcats and one, ooh, wheeled vehicle. I, I remember the name. I just can't get it off the top of my head right now.
Probably don't make that anymore either.
They do. It's just not, yes.
I think, I think we're trying to simplify the question for you.
Yes.
To improve the standard over what we did last year.
Yes, we're going to have to get more Sanders.
Specifically one, two?
We really should have one for every truck. I mean, one for every vehicle, every Bombadier.
So that's three more?
Pardon?
That's three more?
Three more.
And what's the cost for that?
That's the piece that we're researching. So far, the only ones I've found are come from overseas.
That was my question with David.
So we are researching it, and we know it's a concern, and we will be addressing, and we will have a better-
So we can't plow and sand at the same time?
You can, but you can only go as fast because you're towing a trailer as the sander on the back. Generally, what everyone does when you're towing a trailer, you plow first and you come back, connect up. Because you're then going a lot slower to sand, and then you have to keep filling up the sand all the time. Whereas if you're plowing, you can just keep on going.
Get them open.
Get them open.
Question, other questions? Counselor?
I had a couple. I, I want to thank you for sending my constituents to me on the issue of trash in the Weers on the weekends. It may not have been you personally, but, but I did receive actually two calls with regards to there's no trash pickup over the weekends. And, and so I guess I'm asking, is there a way? Because apparently it gets pretty over-
There, there's two issues that we have over, I'll say, weekends, and I'll frame it that way. One is, because we put the decorative trash cans out there with trash and recycling, we shouldn't even bother with the recycling. The, both sides of trash, we treat them as trash, but they don't have the capacity. They're limited by, you know, barrels that maybe 10 gallons appropriate, easy, and they can't get compacted because you've got the top on it. Not a major problem because during a normal two-day weekend, on Monday and Friday, it gets emptied by Casella as they're going through in their route. For a three-day weekend, like Memorial Day, depending upon how Fourth of July falls and Labor Day, Casella doesn't come to the Tuesday, so you've got three days. So the only way to pick it up at that point is either we modify the contract and pay Casella more to come in on a holiday to do it, or we bring my people in overtime. We take the bags out, we throw in the back of a dump truck. We leave it in the dump truck until the station opens up on Tuesday, and then we take it up there and dump it.
Is it possible for us to do that?
We can do anything that you want. Just recognize, one is, it's a weekend. I've got to get volunteers, or I'm telling the junior guy all the time that he's going to be the one collecting it. And then, of course, it costs us effectively double time, double time and a half because we're paying the guy already for being on a holiday, plus we're paying time and a half for working.
We had a standard of going back and then also street sweeping. Has that standard been eliminated?
No, we still streets sweep all the time up there, and we have the-
Over the three-day weekend and over the- Over the three-day weekend and over the-
No, we, we don't street sweep on the-
I think we did, as a council, a couple of budgets ago, specifically put in funding for weekend service in the weers because of the same complaints that Councilor Cheney's raising.
I don't, I think it was for an extra sweeping right before the weekend or getting two sweeps there. I don't recall that we ever had the sweeper there on the weekend itself. I don't recall that during my time.
You did, we did put in a person to work on Saturdays up there in the key areas, as part-time, he only comes on in the summer to, to do, you know, spot cleanup, we'll put it that way.
Well, what's more cost efficient? Contracting out with Casella or using our own employees? Because it, it seems like it's something we need to do.
I mean, it really comes in as, do we want to do it so it's picked up every day up there? Or do we want to-
So it looks nice, is basically the standard that we're looking at.
Then, then it's a multi-part process. We gotta get rid of those, those decorative trash cans, that's one.
Hey, that's easy.
That's easy. We gotta get, buy ones that are large enough to be effective.
That's easy.
Yep. And then we're gonna have to pay somebody and we'll have to determine what the costs are to come in on the weekend and whether it's each, each day or, you know, one day over the weekend to, you know, to pick up. That's what it comes down to.
How about some part-time employees in the summer?
Can't get them. I mean, Parks right now, they, they have, they got zero people applying for their part-timers. The only reason I have a part-timer is he's the same guy who worked for me last year and he just wants to work a little bit. You can't count on getting part-timers right now.
Okay.
It's, I hate to say it.
That would be the best bet.
It would be, but I don't think we're gonna get them.
It's just something that I think we, we all agree we gotta do. And I don't, I don't know whether you do it every day or whether you do it two day, I don't know.
Let's start by changing the cans.
Right.
See what that does. And then, and then if it gets us through the weekend, fine. If it doesn't, we'll talk about maybe one of the two days having somebody go up and empty them.
How many are we talking about?
Good idea.
They were purchased by Parks, so I'd have to go actually up there, count them or talk with Parks to see if they remember how many they bought. I can't remember off the top of my head.
It was a fair, fair number though.
It was a fair number though.
Were we talking an hour or two to collect them, or?
Oh, easily. Because you, because basically, if it gets trashed out, you're cleaning around it first so you'll be able to get the top off to be able to empty the canisters. Casella doesn't even like to empty them at all, just because there, there's so much problems with that type, particular type of trash can.
We're gonna change that.
No, I'm talking about, once we have the new ones in place, how long will it take somebody to make a round?
At least an hour to two. And you're, you generally, depending upon what they're doing, we always try to have two people, one to get hurt and one to call in. We don't do that right now with the, the part-timer we have, because for the most part, he's in areas where there's a lot of people around. But if we do it off hours to pick it up, then we might want to consider a second.
And if we added additional cans, I mean, that's cheap.
Right.
So if we could half again our capacity, that might-
That might be, that might do it.
Get through.
Yeah.
So task number one is to get rid of the decorative containers.
Yep, correct. Well, they can still be decorative, they just need to be-
Bigger.
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 And we don't need recycling, because, I mean, it gets mixed, it's all trash, no one's gonna sort it.
And nobody does it up there anyway, so it's like-
Right.
You know, why?
Okay, other questions or comments? Counselor?
I, I want, this is a comment. I noticed several times this spring, the weight limit signs that, that the city uses. And, and if you stop and get out and read them, you'll know that, that there's a weight limit on the road. Most of the other towns I've seen have in large letters twenty tons or whatever the limit is. Could, could we look into getting some signs that are readable?
These are historical markers, Counselor, you have to get out of your car.
I will say is that, based off the number of businesses who called me on it, they've been able to read them.
Yeah. Well, but they got out of their trucks to do it, I can assure you.
We actually do a pretty good job of publicizing it, that it's going so-
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, but I, I just think, somebody's making them with large numbers on them, we ought to be able to find out who that is.
That's, that's probably the same firm that we deal with.
The folks who are driving the trucks to which the weight limits make a difference, they know.
They know, yes. All the long-haul truckers and the regional truckers.
They, they know, so.
I, I got a lot of phone calls from them over the-
I mean, I don't need to know what the weight limit is when I drive by in my Explorer, I don't need to know that.
You, you may not qualify to drive, anyways.
It depends on what I had for dinner.
Yeah. Only because you brought the subject of kiosks up, and I'm, I suspect they're not really your responsibility, but I, I've been up now twice to the weers and it seems to me we ought to have one or two more kiosks, because it's quite a distance between them.
The, by the pay-by-space, they don't have to walk back, and that's what we kind of sort of figured it that way. They're about, I want to say fifty-five hundred each. And then your subscription goes up, because you pay by the number of kiosks for-
So I'll, I'll jump in, because as part of that conversation, we bought them and I'm trying to think, you came in the middle of that project, right?
Actually, I was here when they-
Bought them, but, but Wes is right. It was just not walking back to your dashboard to display them. And there, there was a formula that one kiosk might do six spaces on either side, because you're walking six spaces and you're coming back six spaces, and then you're going where you want to go. This one, especially on the boardwalk side, we control the crossing points there. So all somebody needs to know is their space number and they're gonna walk by a kiosk wherever they're going, they don't have to go back to their car.
Perfect.
The other thing we figured, just to throw one more piece on it, was, it was seasonal, so that mostly it's going to be good weather, not a lot of people down in the weers on a rainy day, and you're not having to go, you know, go find them in the wintertime either, because they're not operable at that point.
I, I, my question was as much, some, some of the folks I watched wandering around were my age and older.
That's, that's part of our wellness program too, to get their steps in.
The, last year when we fired them up, we had quite a few questions on how to use it. I've not had those same questions or issues this year.
Yeah, it's been a very smooth start.
Yeah.
So what's the revenue that we had last year? What are we projecting here? I know you got it somewhere in here.
Okay, anyone else before we move on?
I don't have it for you off the top of my head, but I, you had a question about the revenue was. I think, I think between the, the two kiosks at Endicott Rock State Park, which are in a separate account, and the twelve that are on Lakeside Avenue, I think collectively we're probably at around a hundred and eighty thousand in revenue for this fiscal year right now. About thirty-five to forty at the beach and a hundred and forty, give or take, on the street.
And we charge a dollar an hour.
On the street and two dollars an hour in the beach for preferred parking.
I want everybody to keep that in mind when we come back to talking about the cost of parking. Two bucks if the weers buys you two hours.
We're gonna have that discussion.
One last, Wes, you said, and I missed, anyways, you mentioned the city council, you come to the city council for approval of snow hauling. And I wondered what that-
And now, you, you, what you asked for when you gave, when you said, put the money aside-
Yeah.
Was sort of like a standard operating procedure, a criteria, of when we decide it's time to go from leaving it there to hauling it.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm on the hook to develop. What is that criteria?
And that's what you're coming back?
Yes.
Okay. I, I thought you were suggesting you were gonna come to us for permission of hauling.
I owe you the criteria.
That's fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else before we move on? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
Very thorough and appreciate it.
Yes, very good.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to Finance, Welfare and Administration. Mr. Myers.
I'm gonna turn it over to the finance director and let him take the lead on all of the above. I'll do administration, but he'll handle finance and welfare.
Almost out of your way.
Go ahead, you got it all.
There you go. Got it, got it. I know. Get up and stretch. I'm getting there.
Take your time, we got two councils.
Okay.
All right?
You got it?
Okay. Do we want to wait for the other two councils to come back?
Three.
Three.
I'll have to ask why everybody leaves the room when you get up to speak.
Well, they must have heard me before.
It's on there.
That's it?
It's on there.
Let's wait a second and see if-
When they come back, I'm gonna start saying, in conclusion.
Just keep the camera on him though.
That's okay.
Let's just show the slide, let's just put the camera on him.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I know it's been a long evening, so I'll try to go through this pretty quickly. Finance Department, I've got to say, first of all, this year, of course, it's been a very difficult year for the Finance Department. With Donna's passing, and then everybody really in the Finance Department and outside in the Clerk's office and City Man's office stepping up to really make sure things, things kept going, you know, and then my coming on board, there's been a lot of change in the department. Just need to recognize that and, and say thank you, actually, to everybody who helped keep things going, gets to where we are. So jumping right in, I've got to follow through on the budget book with this, starting on page forty-eight, which is the first kind of budget unit that's in there with the Finance Department, and that is employee benefits. You're gonna hear me say this a lot tonight, there's not really any big changes here. You know, the, the old thing I'd just like to, you know, can point out is on the health insurance, we're see, we're continuing to see kind of a downward trend there, as more employees choose to opt out of the, the program, that's always a good thing. This particular line covers about forty-two employees and we have six opt-outs, which is actually less than the city average, but that's just the way the numbers are working for the, if you place where the opt-outs are in various departments. Retirement, also just saying, we're seeing the benefits of the reduction in rates that the NHRS Board has a very, very good- Question then. In terms of the budget proposal, if the cost of living goes in, we don't have that in our budget yet, right?
No, but these would be locked in for the two-year period typically, and when the retirement system board does its next actuarial study, any of that impact would be factored in two years from now.
So we would, so these are numbers that-
This rate is solid.
Okay. That's right. Yep. So unless there are any questions about employee benefits, we'll move on to, let's see, the next one is, is the fiscal operating budget on page fifty. And again, you're not seeing a lot of, a lot of change here. Probably the biggest change I'll see is a, is a reduction in the audit fees, and I'd like to say that, I'd like to bear to say that is a reduction in the audit fees. What it is, is a reallocation of that audit to some funds that have always been counted in the audit, but have not really helped pay for the audit. So reallocating that cost, you're seeing, so a reduction in the general fund portion of the audit costs. So, go ahead. So in terms of our overall audit fee, no matter where it's allocated, is that up or down? It's, it's stable. It's unchanged, it's under the contract right now. Moving on again, unless there's any, I'll just sort of say that the finance fiscal, those are the salaries for ten employees, just so you know, it's the, the fiscal office, personnel, purchasing, tax collection, and the salary portion of information technology is all paid for out of this budget. Moving on to the next budget section, which would be the insurance portion on page fifty-four. And again, most of what we have here are, the, the charges to us by Primex, our insurance carrier, which are covered under the multi-year agreements. We continue to enjoy the, you know, the reductions we get by our past practice and what were the safeguards we put in to give us a good rating with, with Primex. On some of the minor things, I'll just say, on wellness and safety, we've got an effort on board now to kind of revitalize those programs. And in fact, we have a proposal currently before the Safety Committee to, to kind of take a look at the safety within this building. By that, I mean, what happens if a fire breaks out, what happens if we receive a bomb threat and such. So we're kind of fast-tracking that and getting that training out there, which will happen next year.
Thank you. I just had a question in regards to the workers' comp insurance on there. It looks like about a fourteen percent increase from eighteen over nineteen. Am I reading that correctly? Two oh nine up to two thirty-nine?
Yes, but it looks like this year it's going to come in closer to two fifty than to two oh nine. So we're actually seeing, I, I think that has kind of come through-
Two fifty, but it, I'm sorry, I've got a number of two thirty-nine, seven eighty-eight there.
No, I'm talking about fiscal year nineteen, the budget compared to actual.
It's an increase of thirty thousand dollars.
I'm looking at line one twenty-five, workers' comp.
That's correct.
So we're at two thirty-nine compared to two oh nine last year.
Are you saying that was the budget?
The two oh nine was a-
Actual was two fifty.
Well, that's correct, that's correct.
Oh, okay.
Some of these renewals occur on a calendar year and, and some of it's based on our actual claims history, so we're-
Okay.
Estimating, but we could have good years and bad years.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
And the bad years tend to stay with you, until they work their way through the cycle. So it is a difficult thing to predict.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Let's see, have any other questions? We'll move on to page fifty-six, which will cover the, the bonds for this year. And what you'll see there are the four bonds that are proposed for, for FY twenty, the city share of the Court Street Bridge replacement, the Court Street Reconstruction, Phase Two, the Endicott Street Waterline Project and Fire Engine Replacement. So we're all set to kind of move forward with those. We started preliminary figures on costing that out, depending upon, you know, building of various scenarios as to what length of term you'd want for each one of those bonds. And we're ready to move on that when you're, when you're ready to, to give us the sign to go ahead.
And I'm gonna jump in here for a second. So one of the things Glenn and I have been talking about and looking at, and I shared an email with Councilor Lippman today as Chair of Finance Committee, is we've actually seen a significant drop in interest rates on the longer end of the curve, on the ten, twenty and thirty year in particular, through the month of May. So there's about a thirty-five basis point drop. And in a lot of cases, those ten, twenty and thirty-year bond interest rates are now at eighteen, twenty-four month lows. Knowing that the timing of this year being a state budget year and we're not sure when the state budget might get settled, or if we go to a continuing resolution, what Glenn and I talked about today was separating the budget resolutions out of the general fund budget to get those approved separately. So these bonds that we're issuing are a part of our general fund. And typically, we needed an affirmative, an affirmative adoption of the budget in order to be able to go out and issue a bond, because bond council or the banks are gonna want to see the vote of the legislative body has approved it. Knowing that the council can go as late as July twenty-fourth in adopting the budget this year, based on that being the Fourth Monday, we feel- we feel it makes sense, if you're in support of those four projects, and we can certainly talk about those in more detail, that we bring you a resolution on your regular council agenda next week on the tenth, to refer them to a public hearing and a vote to authorize the bonds on June twenty-fourth, and that would allow us, in the interim, to be going out to our lending institutions, asking them to quote the various lengths of term and dollar amounts that we're targeting, and be able to take advantage of what really are fantastic rates at the moment, that I would be hesitant to look at my crystal ball and tell you that they might still be there toward the end of July. So that is the thought, and when we get to the capital page, I'll speak a little bit more about the projects, but that would be the financing piece, and I don't know if Councilman Lippman wants to chime in on that as well, but...
I agree with the manager's approach.
It, it's probably my eyes, but next to the fire engine replacement, I see zeros.
Six hundred thousand.
Okay.
It's your eyes. That's okay, I read it as an eight hundred thousand earlier.
But only a ten thousand dollar interest charge during the fiscal year.
Right. On any new debt, we only pay a half year's worth of interest, and the principal doesn't kick in until the following year, so very minimal impact for those projects in this year's budget.
It's traditional bond borrowing.
Yes.
And we've crossed it out what that would be potentially in twenty twenty-one, you know, for all these bonds, depending on, depending on the length of, of term, and taking advantage of the low interest rates that Scott just referred to, we have the, the ability to save, you know, probably twenty, thirty thousand dollars just to take advantage of the payments we have, the interest rates we have now.
Anybody object to using this approach?
So we'll plan on having that, two resolutions for you on next week's agenda. Thank you.
So I'm going to go backwards now to page twenty-eight, which is the remainder of the IT budget, and that is taking a little bit out of Scott's area here, if you don't mind. This is one of the few areas where you're going to see some changes in the way we're trying to do business based on what we've done in the past. And, yeah, as we're trying to kind of take a look at how we spend our IT dollars to get more bang for the buck within the same, within the same framework, without spending any more money. Kind of seems counterintuitive, the first example, you'll see, for example, we have the equipment line is up by about twelve thousand dollars. Well, the plan for that is I'm going to take that twelve thousand dollars and buy actually a backup server for this, for the system in this building, put it over the fire station. What that will allow us to do is stop paying, down at the bottom line, seven thousand dollars a year for ex, for contract backup. So we're, we're really trying hard to take advantage of things like, along those lines. In that regard, what you'll see is a line that hasn't had any money in it for, which is project development. We've got a couple projects in the pipeline that we think can also provide better service at a lower cost. A big one right now is the voice-over internet telephones in this building. Well, this building, we're, we're spending, between this building, parks, and Public Works, about two thousand dollars a month on phone bills. And I think we can cut that way down by using the existing cable network we already have in this building to also service the phones. So we're going to be looking at that in the next, in the next year, and some other projects that Wes had referred to with, with work order processing, and we're going to be paying for that, the research for that out of this account.
Go ahead.
There's no questions?
No.
Then I will move on to welfare.
If I might, I, I see you, the manager, cut out ten thousand for software, and I wonder what the software was that we were not going to purchase.
Well, it was kind of an easy thing to do that, because currently, as was referenced earlier, I think, when Wes was here, and what we've all come in our personal lives, we just don't buy software anymore. I mean, there was a time you'd go down to the store and you, if you want Windows, you'd buy, come home with a couple CDs, and you'd plug them in your computer. That just doesn't happen, so what happens now is that we, well, you purchase licenses. And so what we're now buying through, what, what's historically been in this line through software is now being handled through license purchases.
Thank you.
So, yep.
Plus, I was just mean that day, and I said, Glenn, I'm taking ten grand out of your budget.
No, that's him on a nice day. So the final item is that I'll put on my welfare director hat and go to page one twenty-six, where again, what we have is, is a hold the line budget except. The only change here that you'll see is on the city relief line, which is funded at a, an additional five thousand dollars over what's in the current year budget, and that is a line that we are keeping a close eye on, because as you know, I think from the last report that the manager has done, this year, as of the end of April, that line is already at sixty-eight thousand dollars. And so what we've seen is a kind of a unexpected increase, and that increase is, is continuing. Now, one of the things that I'm going, I am doing is starting to take a look at what's driving that. What are the elements, and what can we do to try to keep it under control? And we're still in the early stages of that, but I just wanted to kind of show you where our welfare dollars are going. And this, this graph kind of shows...
We don't have it up yet.
You don't have it up? Well, I can see it. There you go. So it shows a breakdown of our welfare expenses by the four major categories. Blue is rent, gray is shelter, and shelter, of course, means a carry house, any of the short-term shelters as opposed to apartment rent. The yellow is for burials, which is going to be a bigger part of what we do, and basically, the, kind of the orange is everything else. So that's transportation, that's electricity, that's, so you'll see what is that, rent is a bigger part of, the biggest part of what we pay for in welfare, and getting bigger all the time. So we're trying, we're digging into that to find out what's behind that. What we have found is that the average amount of rent we pay per client is pretty stable. What we've seen is an increase in the number of clients coming to us for rental assistance. And over the next few weeks, we're going to be really digging deeper into this, trying to crack down and see what we can do to get this number back down to where it was along in fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen. You know, we're seeing a hundred people increase over, you know, in the last year. We have some kind of anecdotal reason to believe that that might be related to Laconia's kind of emerging hub in the recovery movement, that people who are staying in Laconia for these programs and coming into this office for rental assistance as they go through those programs. We've already started, had some preliminary talks with the people who run the Drug Court to try to work through this program to see if we can somehow restructure the programs that those folks have to go through as they're coming out of jail and into Drug Court, such that they can also hold down a job. You know, that's kind of one of the things we're trying to strike the balance off. So we're continuing to look at that, and I think there's reason to, to hope that we can kind of turn, turn down the number of clients that we're assisting in rent, in rental and rental assistance over the next year.
From a, from a option availability standpoint, I guess I would call it, what is the, the renovation of the Landmark Inn doing in terms of the options that are available to you?
Decreasing them. Landmark Inn used to be the only hotel in the area that would accept welfare clients, and it no longer is. So that, that decreases our abilities to...
Will we send those out of town then, or what?
We send them out of town, we send them to shelters throughout the state. I don't, I think that is different from what we're talking about here with long-term rents.
Right.
Right, so mostly we...
Talking about temporary shelter.
Right. We'd have to send them out of town. Now, I believe I've read in the paper that Bellknap House is going to be opening year-round as a shelter, that'll take, you know, some of the pressure off of that. Your statistic of a hundred is long-term rent, not, not shelter. That is correct, that's correct. Any other questions about the welfare budget? Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Well done.
Thank you.
So that takes us finally to administration, and you have thirty-seven seconds.
Perfect, any questions? So similar, similar to Glenn's approach, I'm just going to focus on the few budget pages to kind, kind of tie it together, a few items for you. I'm going to start us on page nine, and then, and I'm going to work numerically, incrementally, so we'll be going up from page nine, but, and then our, just a quick side note, our, our last budget presentation will be Parks, Recreation Facilities. It'll be next Monday night at six o'clock, and so that'll be the recreation budget, along with the buildings of the community center, the City Hall Building, and the Police Station Building regarding maintenance. So Amy will be delivering that, but if I turn your attention to page nine, this is the administration budget, so includes my office, my assistant. It includes the salaries for the mayor and council. The other large item in here, about halfway through the bottom section, is the dues that we contribute to the New Hampshire Municipal Association. That supports a lot of our staff and training, supports us legislatively, and that's what shows up in this budget. And I will continue moving unless you jump in with a question, and I will turn you on to page thirteen. So this is the capital in the budget that's being, that is with cash outlay. So you have the current year's capital to the left, and the proposed capital to the right. You can see that we did sixty thousand dollars for the Bond Beach drainage improvements that we're working on this season. A little bit's happening now, and the rest of it will happen post-beach season, just due to timing and availability of contractors. The sixty thousand in the proposed budget is for the Bartlett Beach, both of those facilities had drainage improvements already engineered and designed, so this is just the fixed money going into it now. We have fifteen thousand going into playground revitalization, just to replace and update equipment at the variety of the playgrounds. Under the police area, we have seventy-five thousand in training equipment, I believe the chief spoke to this about this being an interactive use of force training, which is critical for law enforcement, and more of a reality-based training. So that is new money going in. The next line item, which is the cameras, the chief also spoke a little bit about that, those were the proposed five mobile cameras that they could put in. They've already tested one, and the quality of this camera far exceeds the few that were purchased a couple of years ago and returned due to poor quality. So the request was for five cameras for seventy-five thousand dollars, and they probably caught me in a mood that day, and I said, I can't afford seventy-five thousand for five, so let's buy three this year in addition to the one that you've already got, and they said that was acceptable. So there's forty-five thousand to purchase three cameras. The computer equipment here is in addition to the computer and the police line item budget. This is for basically replacing, and Councilor Chin, you can tell me, the, the hard books and all the cruisers, is that the proper name for them all? So all the laptops and everything are very old, very slow, this will replace them, and the download of data and stuff from the cruisers will be very efficient for the officers, not having to get out of their car to go inside the building every time they need to be downloading information too. So a ten thousand dollar upgrade, but it will save them a boatload of time. Under the DPW, I want to jump to the very big number of one point three three million dollars on the street budget. So the request was one point six, ideally, that's what I was hoping for, but if you look over to the left-hand column, we had a million three hundred and eighty thousand in that line item last year. So it is a decrease of fifty thousand dollars on the capital item. But as Glenn had pointed out on the Finance Debt Service page, we have fully funded both of those two years, two point five million dollar bonds, our full principal and interest factored into here, and the direction the council had said to me is if you need to take some money out of the cash portion of the budget, go ahead and do that to make it work. We all know that our roads continue to need more money than we're putting at them, so I'm, I actually am going to say, I'm pleased that we only had a fifty thousand dollar reduction on the cash side while we have fully paid for both of those two and a half million dollar bonds in the finance section.
So put it, put it in another way, we're, do you, correct me if I'm wrong, we're decreasing the road budget slightly to divert that money to pay principal and interest costs on the five million dollars we borrowed for roads.
But if you look at the five million dollars, those two bonds combined, that's over a six hundred thousand dollar a year principal and interest payment for ten years. So the fact that collectively, the budget accommodates that hit, and only reduce the cash side of the street operations by fifty thousand, I view as, as a positive on the way this budget came together. The other ones are fairly routine, and we're dealing with the drainage improvement, sidewalks, fences, guardrails, stormwater, all that good stuff. And we do have the new line item listed there in capital that, that Wes had pointed out on the remediation requirements for some of our capped landfill sites right now. Not only the testing that we're doing, but this is actually going to be the initial stage for the more in-road landfill of some additional site work for the, the permanent capping, if you will, of that, to make sure it's contained. So that money is in there, again, for a second year, but we're continuing to do that. At the bottom, you'll see the vehicles, so we have the routine replacement of police cruisers, which the chief spoke of. We have two vehicles in Parks and Recreation, a dump truck with a crew cab, and a pickup truck with a plow. And then we have the hundred and ninety thousand in the Public Works budget, part of which supports the remainder of a ten-year debt service on some large equipment purchases, and others which support smaller capital purchases within the vehicles going forward. So that's the capital that is cash within the budget. And if we turn to page twenty, just in a different place from where they showed up in finance, these were the requests to debt, provide debt service to fund these items. So you can see, we have the city's share in the state aid bridge program of an eighty-twenty split for the Court Street Bridge for three hundred thousand dollars. We have second phase of Court Street, which is one point three million, which I'll get back to in a second. We have the properties on Endicott East that due to a lowering of acceptable standards through the Laconia Gardens landfill site, we need to run a water line to three properties in order to provide the potable water there.
Never heard that phrase before tonight.
Which phrase?
Laconia Gardens, where in the world did that come from?
That's, that's what they've been referring to since I got here, so I don't know the history, but that's what they referred it to. And then the fire engine replacement for the six hundred thousand. The ambulance, while needed, again, I shared with you a meeting or two ago, that we want to just kind of get a full year of the revenues, and we can maybe look at the ambulance again in the fall. We do have fifty thousand dollars targeted to go into a capital reserve account for the ambulance this year, and in the proposed budget as well. So there will be cash there to be paying for that, whether we save up and buy it in cash, or whether we do a five-year lease to own, and we buy it out for a dollar at the end of the term. But we can make that decision, and the funds will be available on the ambulance. So the, the Court Street Phase Three, if you recall, a couple of years ago, the city council increased what they refer to as the Municipal Transportation Special Revenue Account, which is that added surcharge when you register your vehicle. It's enabling legislation, the city used to charge a dollar fifty. State law currently allows that you can charge up to five dollars, and the city council approved that a couple of years ago. Again, by state law, that money needs to go into a separate dedicated account for tracking purposes, which the city does. At the end of this fiscal year, we will have collected that extra five dollars for two full years, and in round numbers, we probably will have about a hundred and eighty-five or a hundred and ninety thousand dollars available there. This year, we'll have an additional ninety thousand dollars coming in as part of the motor vehicle registration. So if I can turn your attention to page, page two, way back to the beginning of the budget. If you come down about a third of the way of the page, the top line item, number thirty-one, under license and permits, that three million and eighty-five thousand dollars that we're projecting for revenue includes that ninety thousand dollars from the five-dollar surcharge. So we will be spending that, we've accounted for it as revenue, we'll be spending that towards that one point three million dollar bond. I'm also recommending, if you come down and look under line fifty-nine, which says miscellaneous revenues, of using fifty thousand dollars that is sitting out of that account right now, that's going to have a balance of around a hundred and eighty-five or a hundred and ninety thousand by the time we close out this fiscal year. Fifty thousand of that would be a transfer out of that... fiscal year. Fifty thousand of that would be a transfer out of that account to come in and support that bond. So that would be the process. We aren't draining that account all in one year. There'll still be another hundred and thirty thousand there if we need to transfer some money in future years. But that's how we're planning on paying for that bond, supported by that motor vehicle registration fee, which is an appropriate use for it. All right, we'll move on to page twenty-two, if there are no questions. These are a couple of catch-all lines in here. We have everything from some cemetery support money to some contractual requirements we have through labor contracts and employee recognition awards. We have our five thousand dollar contribution in here for the city's Motorcycle Week contribution. You can see the thirty-one thousand eight hundred, which is plugged in there, which is Laconia's share for the Lake Region Public Access Program. And out of this budget of over twenty million dollars on the city side, you will see our contingency line item in the middle of that block of lines in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. So that's the contingency line item for the city portion of the budget for the next fiscal year. Okay, I will keep the momentum going, turn it one page to page twenty-four. These are what we refer to as administrative special items. Some of these are social service agencies, some of these are other support type of agencies or programs. Typically, for any of the social service agencies, we do have a request form for these folks to fill out for us, so we know their budgets, we know who they serve, we know how many of the folks they serve come from Laconia. We know there are other sources of information, so that's all available if anybody wants to come in and get into that level of detail for what some of the budgets are for the various groups that we support, like the senior center, the visiting nurses, Lake Region Mental Health Center, and others. So no real significant changes through these items, with the exception of the milfoil line item, which I think we spoke of when Dean Trefethan presented the land use boards a couple of weeks. So we are seeing more of a demand for that as the Wintis Quam watershed has gotten more organized. I also indicated that the pool of state money continues to shrink, and there seem to be more request for that shrinking pool of money. So I view it as a positive that we've been able to almost double. We, last year, we had twenty-two thousand five hundred in milfoil, and this year, the proposal is for forty thousand. And I can tell you that's still probably not enough, but at least we're heading in the right direction, and that's almost a hundred percent increase. And it's always been a priority of the council to maintain our quality of water for not only aesthetics, but for tourism and our quality of life as well. So that's the major change under page twenty-four. Page sixty-eight is our legal budget. The main focus that we work with Mitchell Municipal Law Group are lines oh-three and oh-five. So the, I'm sorry, oh-five and oh-six, the litigation and the retainer. So the retainer is our basic monthly fee, and this is tracked on a number of calls, hours spent. I review it with Walter Mitchell every year, and sometimes they've benefited a little bit more in another year. We've benefited a little more, but we always kind of do a do-to and do-from and make sure it's working for both parties. So that provides us for general staff legal access on day-to-day questions. I need help with the ordinance, I need your interpretation of this, how are we drafting this, what's the approach, et cetera. They're who I reached out to when we started talking about historic district commissions, and what's the protocol, and how do we go through this type of stuff. Anything above and beyond that that requires litigation, it might be a land use board case they go to court on, it might be something different that we're involved in, that gets billed out for an actual. So that's thirty thousand dollars in there as a placeholder, and you can see that that number varies, but seems to be a reasonable number to have in there. We have a fifteen thousand dollar line item up above for sometimes special outside legal counsel. That could be an environmental issue, it could be something along those lines. And then we have a small amount on the very bottom line item for a negotiator. Up until about four years ago, we hired a negotiator through a law firm to handle our labor contract negotiations. And I started handling those directly with Paula Baumell, our personnel specialist, about four or five years ago. And we basically have cut out what was a very large number every two or three years. And now we just keep a placeholder of five thousand dollars in case there's a grievance or in case something comes up through labor, you know, issues that we need some guidance on during the year. So our entire labor, I'm sorry, our entire legal budget is proposed at a little under a hundred and thousand dollars. And I think we're very efficient and very effective with how we handle that. Two last pages deal with a city clerk. I was going to throw her under the bus and make her present them, but she gave me the look, and I said, okay, I'll handle them for you tonight. So we have the city clerk records budget on page one oh-seven. Really, no changes going on with that budget. A little bit of change in the salaries. Cheryl, coming up on her first full year as clerk, partially a full year, has identified some trends and some savings on some of the supplies and different needs in her office down below, but that's basically a flat budget. And then if we turn to page one eleven, the second component of the clerk's budget is the elections. And this is basically driven by the number of elections we have in any given year. Sometimes we've had some special elections due to someone resigning from a house seat or something like that, that we can't...
We have a New Hampshire primary based in this one, right?
This is not a state primary year, so we potentially have a local primary.
Presidential primary.
But that, nope.
Next year.
That's a, that's a...
It's in this fiscal year, twenty.
Next calendar year, this fiscal year, right?
Next calendar year.
Right, okay. So we have the, we have the local election, and we have a primary. Yes, you're correct. I'm sorry. We don't have the state primary and the state general election.
Presidential primary.
Yes, thank you. I was, I was thinking different primary. But yes. So that just reflects how many elections in a given year doing it. I do want to point out, nothing to do with this budget, because we've rearranged some existing resources, but I want to share with you tonight that in an effort to try to make City Hall accessible later in hours, on a couple of days a month to service our customers a little bit better, starting in July, we are going to be open on the first and third Tuesdays of every month. Instead of closing at four-thirty, we'll be open to six o'clock, and people will be able to walk in and do transactions with the clerk's office, the tax office, and anything to do with the land use office downstairs. And we've just reallocated existing people and figured Tuesdays work because that's Planning Board night in one sense. We chose to stay away from Mondays because a lot of times we maybe close Monday if it was a long holiday weekend, tend to follow Mondays. So two Tuesdays a month will be open to six o'clock with no additional staffing hires, just reallocating a little bit of some time with some folks. And we think that'll be a positive for those who sometimes are challenged getting here for four-thirty or are already out of work in the area when we open at eight-thirty. So that'll be starting in July, and we'll get some information out on that as far as press releases and news and the links. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Any questions on administration?
Comments?
Okay, any other business to come before the meeting tonight?
I do have a question. Can you tell us where we stand with our solar?
Yes. So the solar project that got approved last year, whatever the, I think it was a House bill, was vetoed by the governor, and it didn't survive an override attempt. So the project kind of got put on hold. Similar legislation was introduced this year. It passed both the House and the Senate by what people are terming very large veto-proof majorities, and this full anticipation that it will, if it is vetoed, will survive.
It was vetoed today.
Okay, so there is, mines and conquerors say that the veto will be overridden. On this, we'll wait to see. So our folks have been working through the spring, they've been working with Eversource to do the layout. I know they've been in discussion with Dean Trefethan, our planning director, to come before the Planning Board for the approval on that. So that's in the works. I would expect them to be before the Planning Board at some point this summer, and I would expect action to begin out there sometime after the approvals this fall.
And that should be a savings to us at some point.
Yes, there is forty-five thousand dollars in revenue under a line item solar array that I believe is also on page two of your budget book. I've got to memorize.
That's for rent. That's for rent. We're not going to see any energy savings.
I thought they were going to provide us with...
No, this was strictly a reuse of the site. So a component of it is rent and a small piece of it, by the way, the legislation was crafted, it had to be a pilot. So collectively, it's forty-five thousand dollars annually for that revenue stream. It was easier to feed it. There is a transmission line that runs right through that site, and it was much, much easier for them to feed it in there. And the city has gotten pretty good rates on the open market, going out through purchasing for our electrical rates. So we thought we would stay where we were with that.
Any other business? Just the planning a deliberative session for the budget in terms of...
Yes, so we've got on the calendar that you had back in April, we've got it set for Monday, May seventeenth to...
June seventeen.
I'm sorry, Monday, June seventeen, yes.
Special budget meeting.
Special budget meeting. So if there's requests, if you have any questions ahead, if you've got department heads we need to have back for additional information.
To my understanding, the committees of conference at state level report out like June twentieth.
I believe Senate Finance passed their budget on Friday, if I recall correctly, and it's going to the full Senate on Thursday, and then the next step will be Committee of Conference. So...
So I'm just saying, maybe we ought to have a special meeting on the deliberation, because I think the seventeenth is too early.
We certainly can, I mean, will the council, we can do it on this...
Well, I think, I think the purpose of the seventeenth is to, every year, somebody says, let's switch twenty thousand from this account to another account, that sort of thing. But this, this, I think, what's different about this, what's potentially different about this state budget is that there's some significant potential revenue sharing increases, which would maybe change how we might work through those types of items. So you want to delay the, not, not...
The deliberative session, I think, would be better scheduled maybe a week later.
Sure. And we typically have done it on a non-meeting night.
A week later is our regular meeting.
Right.
Just do it during that, is that what you're suggesting?
You had it set for the seventeenth, and a regular meeting's on the twenty-fourth.
Seventeenth, so a special meeting, regular meeting, twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I would say do it the twenty-fourth.
Or even the, even in July?
I guess I would either do it the twenty-fourth or the eighth, right? But if we can wrap it up on the twenty-fourth, that would be good.
Why don't we do a six o'clock start, and if we are in a good place, then we're in a good place. And if not, we can look to schedule something additional.
Right. I mean, like, for example, filling that thirty thousand dollar hole in the paving budget, that might be an easy thing to do.
That thirty thousand dollar hole.
Remember, we went over a few minutes ago, the fact that we had to divert thirty thousand from the cash component of roads, to pay for the bond.
So you or someone else is going to propose putting that thirty thousand back in?
I'm saying it may be easy for us to do if there's certain state budget passage.
I think part of the mix, I know the mayor and I have talked a little bit, is also we've got the Colonial Theater topic.
Yes.
Out there as well, that may need to be addressed with this budget.
Hanging is a good word.
We're going to deal with something of that.
And we have a proposal from the Belknap Mill for a hundred thousand dollar donation too, that needs to be considered to the special items budget. So what's the will of the council? Matters not to me.
Twenty-fourth is fine for me.
Yeah, let's go the twenty-fourth.
All right, so we'll start early on the twenty-fourth.
Start at six, and we'll cancel the special meeting that was slated for the seventeenth.
Okay.
And we still start at six o'clock.
Won't hurt my feelings any.
We still start at six o'clock next week with the one-hour budget presentation prior to the regular meeting for Parks, Recreation, Facilities.
All right, so at the next, I got to make sure I understand this. On the tenth, the ordinance committee's going to meet at five?
No, they scheduled, so we're going to do five-thirty for the dedication ceremony. The ordinance committee is going to meet on Tuesday at five, and that way, they're not up against a five-thirty window.
Okay. So at, at six, we have the budget, five-thirty, we have the ceremony, six o'clock, we have the budget presentations, seven o'clock, we have the regular meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Five on the eleventh?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at nine seventeen PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
You're welcome.